Good morning, thank you very much. It's the 25th of August, it's the Ordinary Council meeting, held in chambers, and the time is 9:01. I'll ask Council Quinsman to do the acknowledgement to country.
Thank you, ma'am. We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land and resources. We pay respect to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders, and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge. We welcome Indigenous and Torres Strait Islanders in attendance.
Thank you very much, Council Quinsman. And I've got to call attendance, so in the room we have Council Quinsman, Council Milligan, Council Fechner, Council Doyle, Council Tully, and Council John Eick. I understand the deputy mayor is on his way, he'll be here in five or 10 minutes. A note too that Councila Ireland did originally have a leave of absence, but she is actually available, so I think we'll do a bit.
I'm present, ma'am.
You are, thank you. I'd like to...
Thank you.
Thank you. So after do the opening prayer, I'll do that movement for her to part the audio link. So lead us into prayer. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do, and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long-term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Yeah. I'm about to move a motion for her to attend via audio link because she was a... yeah, our procedures do allow it, so. So I'll move that in accordance with Section 254-K of the Local Government Regulations and 8.6.2 of Council's Meeting Procedures policy, that Council shall be permitted to participate in the meeting via an audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Quinsman. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the room, and welcome, Council Ireland.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll move on to item five, which are condolences, which there are nil. So I've already given apology for Council Madsen. Tributes, there are nil. We want to see what's the presentation of petitions. So this is a petition from residents outside Ipswich. So this is a petition submitted by concerned residents of Mogal, Bellbarrier and Anstead, requesting council address some noise, pollution emanating from the Red Bank motorway industrial estate. I will move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Quinsman. Any discussion? Okay, well I moved that recommendation that the petition be received, and I also think that we refer it to the relevant council area for a report. Yep. Is that okay with you, Council Quinsman? Any discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote, Council Ireland?
I agree.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Item eight is presentations and deputations. May I... I know that the deputy mayor is not here. May I move a motion that item eight should be moved to later in the agenda to allow councillor for the deputy mayor to do that? So I'll just... I move that item eight, presentation of deputations, be moved in the order after 6.5 before 17. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Milligan. Any discussion? In that case, I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote, Council Ireland?
I agree, thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is public participation, there is none. Item 10 matters on public interest, there is none. We're now moving on to declarations of interest in the matters on the agenda, do we have any declarations?
Thanks, ma'am. In accordance with Section 150-EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Fechner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6, titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's Report. The nature of my declarables are both my interests in A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahaz and Bo Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town here in Ipswich. Plan on dealing with the conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, Council Fechner. Are there any other declarations of interest? Yes, Council Tully?
I have one. In accordance with Section 150-EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Paul Tully informed the meeting that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in item five on the Governance and Transparency Committee Report in relation to a proposed lease to the Goodneran District's Rugby League Football Club, Inc. The possible conflict is that I have been a former president and patron of the club, but I haven't held any position except as an ordinary member for over two years. So I think a similar situation had arisen previously, but it'd be up to the meeting to decide. I'd propose to stay in the meeting, I don't propose to speak on the matter, and if it's agreeable to the council to vote on the matter.
Okay. So do you have a motion that you'd like to put forward?
No, I think the other councillors have to propose the motion.
Okay. Okay, so did you do it in accordance with Section 150-EQ, was that correct?
EQ, correct.
Thank you. So I propose in accordance with Section 150-EQ of the Local Government Act that councillor Paul Tully participate in votes on item, now it's 15.2 on our agenda, but item five of that particular agenda item, because there's no personal financial benefit and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Quinsman. Any discussion? No, I think just you haven't been an office bearer for some years, is that correct, Council Tully?
Since 2020.
2020.
Prior to 2000, including and prior to that, but not since then.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you, it's unanimous, thank you.
Could it be noted, ma'am, that I didn't vote?
It noted that Council Tully did not vote. Thank you. Welcome, Deputy Mayor, just letting you know that item eight presentations, we've just moved to be in between items 16.5 and 17, the box flat presentation. That was listed. Item eight was you doing a box flat presentation?
Yeah.
We've just moved that to later in the agenda, because you weren't here, thank you. Oh yes. We've also just passed item 11, which is the declarations of interest on the matters on the agenda, so I'll raise that again. Do you have any declarations of interest, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in accordance with Section 150-EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in the item 15.6, Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report. I think there's a set of special council things as well, but those decisions are already made, so I'll refrain from that one. The nature of the interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee, and our building the Ipswich Trades Hall is adjacent to the CBD redevelopment works that council's undergoing. As a result of that, I'm going to leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Any other declarations? No, thank you. I'll move on to item 12.1, which is the confirmation of the ordinary minutes of the ordinary meeting of on the 28th of July 2022. I will move those. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Doyle. Any discussion on those minutes? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, unanimous and carried. Now I move to 12.2, which is the confirmation of the minutes for the special meeting that was on the 11th of August 2022. I'll move those. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Doyle. Any discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote, Councillor Ireland?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. I now move on to merrill minute 13, which also was a matter I'm asking for it to be lifted from the table from the previous meeting, so I moved that the matter relating to the meeting and corporate communicators policy be lifted from the table. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Quinsman. Any discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried. So that merrill minute is lifted off the table. You have the documentation there. Because there are two recommendations there, I guess I'll move them separately. So I'll speak to recommendation A. Earlier this year, this council made changes to its media and communications policy to improve and broaden council's media communications. The new policy moves specific commitments to media transparency and accountability. Council has robust transparency procedures for meeting documentation and Australia's first transparency integrity hub with unprecedented access to council's finances and other data. Local government regulations stipulate that meeting papers, agendas and a range of other documents are public domain and must be published. While I'm supportive of the changes made earlier this year, with the benefit of time to reflect and with feedback from the community and from key stakeholders, it's clear that there is an expectation that we maintain clear and well-articulated commitments to transparency and accountability. But our community want us to be more than basic compliance, they want to see us continuing to lead the way, to be better than basic compliance. That means making clear on our commitment on access to documents, including when it's uncomfortable for us to make the documents available. This minute aims to reintroduce specific commitments to transparency and accountability into the policy, as well as to enshrine council's commitment to a free, diverse and active local media environment in line with our community's expectations. Today's proposed changes aim to expressly ensure that transparency and access to information is reiterated and enshrined in council's media and communications policy. So as a merrill minute, it's moved and seconded, I'll leave it open for discussion. Oh, it's a merrill minute.
Just a question for you, ma'am. You mentioned reintroducing transparency, is that correct?
Not reintroducing transparency, but reintroducing... This minute aims to reintroduce specific commitments to transparency and accountability.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any discussion? No, I put the... sorry, yes, Council Tully?
Sorry, just very briefly, I'm supportive of this element. I'll reiterate what I've said previously, that I would describe it as an overarching and some people would call a motherhood statement, which is probably not necessary in law, as you pointed out, because the legislation requires a level of transparency for all councils in Queensland which hasn't existed until recent times. I just have a query and a possible amendment that if you look at the policy and a section which has been deleted, it talks about timely, accurate, relevant and consistent information. There's four elements, but if you go to the proposed section, this is the pages one of 10 in red up the top, it just talks about commitment to timely and accurate information. Could I just clarify whether it would be appropriate in your view to include the words relevant and consistent as currently?
Right. So you're looking at the first paragraph where it says can provide timely and accurate information, you suggesting that we put timely, accurate, relevant and consistent?
Yes, if you go down to the third paragraph there which is deleted, that would...
Yes, use that wording.
It's just because people can read into situations like this, anything at all, and I'm not casting aspersions widely, I'm just saying that people would say, oh, well you voted to not have relevant or consistent information, so with your agreement, I'd propose that change.
So I look at the... what you're looking at is, I'll say the second paragraph in that amendment says this policy confirms our ongoing commitment to provide timely, remove accurate, put a comma, timely, accurate, relevant and consistent information to the community through positive working relationships.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that correct? So bringing forward what was in the previously, previous document.
Yes.
Yes, I'm very happy with that, that's a good suggestion, thank you, Council Tully. Yeah. Yeah, so be timely, accurate, relevant and consistent. So that's in the first paragraph. And I agree to that. Any other discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, Council Ireland, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to recommendation B, which states that... I'll move on to recommendation B, which states that any further changes to council's media and corporate communications policy must include consultation with subject matter experts, council's media and communications branch and local media stakeholders to ensure changes are in line with industry best practice and industry expectations as per council's policy and procedures management guide. So as a mayoral motion, I'll, I'll move and second that and I'll speak to that. Our community expects us to consult widely for different points of view, including ones that may not accord with our own, and to take on board these views in our decision-making. Our previous policy was drafted without any discussions that included impacted stakeholders such as local media organisations. As part of our commitment to best practice, we should commit to discussing any further changes with media organisations for their perspective and their input. Recently, the state government consulted widely on shield laws to protect journalist sources and journalists from being forced to identify sources. The Department of Attorney General's report into the consultation indicates that a wide range of views were sought. The media, entertainment and arts alliance, leading Queensland media academics, the Australian Press Council, Alliance for Journalist Freedom and other think tanks, leading solicitors and academics. While our media policy possibly doesn't have the same significance as shield laws, the principle of stakeholder engagement remains the same. Our own policy and procedure management guide outlines best practice, including stakeholder engagement on major changes to policies and procedures. This provision also does not preclude council from making future decisions, nor does it gatekeep who can be involved. It simply reaffirms this council's commitment to best practice public administration, which includes consultation. I'll open the matter up for discussion. Thank you councillor Doyle.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I think we've, we've had a discussion around this, um, already, so, um, just want to revisit the, the framework that's referred to. Um, it, it is actually silent on the role of elected representatives throughout that process. It's, it's very, you know, my view is it's very operational and organisation centric and needs a lot of work, I guess, to really define the role of elected reps in my view. Um, and if we look at the, the policy this year that was, um, adopted, I note that it was, I think, the fourth, uh, draft policy, uh, presented to us as councillors. One, um, earlier version, I'd gone to great lengths to provide my feedback, um, and, and, you know, all of a sudden it was no longer relevant and we were being presented with a brand new policy. So I'm not, um, convinced or satisfied that we have appropriate, um, procedures and guidelines in place. I am, um, I, I really want to be, um, supportive of, you know, going forward. We develop that, but at the moment it's not developed from a, from an elected rep's point of view. So until such time have we've got the appropriate framework in, in place, I'm not supportive of B. There's still a lot of, of work to be done, um, just to, to have that framework set up appropriately to avoid, um, what we've seen in the past for drafts, um, being given to me as an elected rep in a matter of months. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Thank you deputy mayor.
I speak in support of the commentary provided this morning by councillor Doyle. I think she was bang on the money. The, um, council's policy and procedure management guide completely undersells the role of councillors under legislation. And I see that as a bit of work that the governance and transparency committee will have to sink their teeth into in due course. Um, it is worth talking about the history of this media policy. I gave very robust feedback on the original one. Um, the original media policy that we had here at council was quite poor in my opinion, and I'm happy to openly state that. Um, I am passionate about good public policy. Um, now in regards to the process of that being reformed, um, that was problematic and we do need to be better at that when we reform policy into the future. Um, so let's learn from it and let's have a look at this guide and see what we can do, um, to ensure that we are appropriately included in new policy as the elected members of our community to make decisions. Um, I'm a big fan of democracy, quite open about that. Also a big fan of the Westminster system. So the, any policy that the council has, it's, it's something for the councillors to review to see if it's creating the best interests of the council. Um, I vote for the changes to the media policy earlier this year. We're in the best interests of council. Um, no surprises there to anyone. Um, so yet again, I'll reiterate, speak in support of what councillor Doyle said. Um, open to looking at this policy and procedure management guide, um, but we need to get a better grasp of good government. Um, that's a phrase that's not talked about enough here. Um, we are a government, not a corporation, and, um, looking forward to the future and what it brings.
Thank you deputy mayor. Any other discussion? Thank you councillor Tully.
Sorry, through you, ma'am.
So you had your hand up councillor Tully?
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief in my comments. Um, the, uh, motion that we've just carried, um, is very broad and it is very indicative, um, of the importance of, uh, good, uh, media relations between an elected body and, uh, local media. Uh, my concern with this, um, is in relation to the consultation where there's, um, matters which are not very specific, uh, and, and it requires, if this motion were to be carried, um, consultation even, even over minor changes or technical changes or changes, uh, which are not necessarily of great substance. Um, it, it talks about subject matter experts. Um, I'm not sure what that might include. It could include a whole range of people, council's media and communications branch. Um, yes, well, that makes sense. Including councillors would also make sense. Um, local media stakeholders, how broad is that? Local media stakeholders might be the three newspapers, um, in Ipswich. It could be River nine four nine. It could be the ABC, which has a presence in the city. But it could also be all of the radio and television stations which, uh, their licenses, uh, cover the city of Ipswich and their broadcasting rights. Um, it could cover newspapers such as the Courier Mail and the Australian, which circulate in the, in the city. I think it's very broad, very time consuming and would, um, if this were to be carried, would prevent council for, from making a, a decision to amend the policy, um, at short notice if there, if that was, uh, required. Um, I'm also concerned, um, uh, talking about, uh, industry, best industry practice. I think that sort of suggests that local government is an industry, which it's not. Local government is a representative body in Queensland. There are seventy seven councils in, in our state. Um, most people would see us as a, a legitimate tier of government, um, under the Australian, uh, system. And rather than describing us a, as an industry, um, or industry, uh, practice. Um, you, you mentioned about shield laws in the, uh, consultation. That makes sense in relation to, um, uh, amendments of our legislation, which the government engages in. There's a big difference between that and the corollary of that at local government would be local laws, um, where laws are being proposed and there are advertising requirements and, uh, consultation requirements, uh, required, um, so that the, uh, public is, uh, aware of that, as I understand it. So, um, I, I just think that this is probably, I don't know of any other council in Queensland that, um, uh, has this sort of provision where it must go out to a group of, um, people, a wide ranging group, uh, potentially over matters which are an internal, uh, matter of how we disseminate information to the community. I agree where there are changes to local laws. Um, uh, that, that, that's sort of on all, all, all fours with the shield laws, you know, going out to the community and to the media. Um, I, I just, I just think this, uh, the amendment we've already carried today, I, I think is, is sufficient at this stage. And, um, I just think it's, um, probably going too far. Um, and, and how do we assess those comments? You know, would the fourth estate be then deciding in, in essence, um, uh, what our policy should be? Um, and there is a conflict of interest. There's no doubt there'd be a conflict of interest for, for, for the media, um, who have different aims and objectives. And I'm not saying that in any negative sense at all. But, um, we are a, uh, government in our own right, albeit one created under the Local Government Act, and we should decide, um, our own internal policies.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Johnne?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to add, um, that in agreeance with, um, councillor Doyle and councillor Tully and councillor Madsen, uh, and also that I believe the policy that we have for media and comms has still, um, got a way to go to reflect what the elected reps truly want. Um, and when it comes to culture, it doesn't always respond to the written word in predictable ways. So, because culture is an experience, so it can't be made explicit. Uh, it can't be codified into rules or standards or practices. Uh, when you reduce culture to, uh, charts, handbooks, protocols, manuals and policies, um, it can be measured and managed, but the culture kind of trumps any policy. So I think that we've got a lot of work to do in that area. Um, not everything that counts can be counted and not everything that be, can be counted counts. So, um, I believe we need to work more on the effectiveness of our media and communications policy as a culture of elected reps, um, before we layer on any more rules or regulations. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Johnne. Any other discussion?
I just want to put on the record, mayor, that I've got full faith in the organisation, Sonia, the media manager. And I think a lot of, you know, what you're trying to call out here in B is much work that would be done by the CEO and the media manager. Um, you know, they are the subject matter experts for us. They do, you know, curate and foster those relationships with media outlets. So, um, it's not to say that, you know, wi- without adopting B, this isn't already happening. You know, it, I, I'm, I'm of a firm belief that, um, we have a great media team who are working closely with our local media outlets. Um, so they'd be a great resource for us, um, when developing any new policy. And I'm sure, um, that the organisation would put that forward to us as well.
Thank you councillor Fekna. Any other discussion? I guess as a, a right of reply before, before going in, um, I look at, I guess, page eleven of the, um, policy and procedure management guide, and I'll speak as someone who has worked in policy in, down in Canberra, uh, with the Department of Defence, but also in, um, Brisbane and Queensland government, working in policy roles. It's a pretty standard document, which does include, um, policies, which does include council's role as elected reps in policies. And then talks about administrative directives and procedures under the CEO. So it's quite clear for me, the roles and responsibilities, but my main intent is, um, if we do any future changes, policies are a live document, so they, they, they morph and change. We review them. I would just want to make sure that, um, the, our local media is engaged in any changes, is, is my intention. So that's my right of reply. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of recommendation A, please raise your hand. It's just myself. Those against?
Sorry, mayor, did you say a recommendation A?
Oh, oh, sorry. I, I'll let me say recommendation B. My apologies. Thank you for picking that up councillor Doyle. Those in favour of recommendation B, please raise your hand. It's just myself. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
I vote, I vote against.
Against, thank you. Those again?
Negative.
Negative, thank you. Those against? Thank you very much. So it's councillor Madsen, Johnne, councillor Tully, councillor, uh, Doyle, councillor Fekno, councillor, Meligan, councillor Kunsman, as well as councillor Ireland. Thank you very much. And I thank you for a respectful discourse. There's an old saying, um, a group think means the group's not thinking. So thank you. We now move on to item fourteen, which is a business outstanding, um, and all matters, uh, lying on the table. There is none others. Move on to item fifteen, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. And the first one is the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee. So I move that the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee report on the eleventh of August, uh, be noted. Do I have a second for that? Looking at my deputy. Thank you very much councillor Tully. Any discussion on those matters? No, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland?
Uh, I agree.
Agree. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item fifteen point two, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll move over to the deputy mayor, he was the chair of that committee, to see how he would like that matter dealt with.
I'm happy to proceed, but I think in the interests of allowing councillor Tully the opportunity to speak to and, oh wait, was voted that he could take part anyway. Apologies, I was fighting with my laptop. Um, the council laptops fail all the time, mayor.
So I'll just ask councillor Ireland, um, until you've asked to speak. Uh, so what were you trying to say councillor Madsen? I couldn't hear.
I'd initially incorrectly remembered the determination that was made on councillor Tully's declaration earlier. Um, so in the interests of no longer speaking about the frustrations that council's laptops provide me as a councillor, um, I would like to propose that we accept the recommendation as before us today.
Thank you very, so you'll move that? Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Ligon. Uh, I'll open the matter up for any discussion. Thank you councillor Tully.
Yes, with that introduction, I'd be more than happy to speak in relation to our item five, which is the proposed extended lease or new lease, um, to the Goodna Rundishtrix Rugby League Football Club Incorporated. The Rugby League club, uh, was formed in nineteen hundred and twelve, and that was just four years after Rugby League was, um, um, established, um, as a breakaway football code from rugby union in nineteen hundred and eight. Um, it's, hasn't always been at Richardson Park on Brisbane Terrace. It was formerly, um, in an area, um, uh, at Gales, and now known as Gales, adjacent to Wogaru Creek, where the Caravan Park formerly was, um, and then moved over to, um, Brisbane Terrace in the nineteen thirties. But it's a very proud club. Um, it might only, I know, we've got four councillors who represent, uh, part, parts of Goodna. Um, but the, the proposal I put forward earlier was, was that this is a, a relatively routine matter. Um, yeah, to extend a lease for, for a long-term, uh, club. Um, Rugby League is struggling, um, uh, beyond the city of Brisbane. Um, you know, the Ipswich competition is, um, has been, uh, reduced. But, um, it's a club that provides, uh, a lot of, um, support to both seniors and juniors. And I see the support to juniors of great significance. So it's, I'm pleasing, it's pleasing to me personally to, to see this being brought forward, uh, by council today.
Thank you councillor Tully. There's five us, us councillors who represent Goodna.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, didn't listen to my teacher in grade one, the maths teacher.
Thank you. It's good, I think, because this is, uh, for the, um, uh, the clubhouse itself. So it's good for them to, rather than being a six-month lease, it's actually a five-year lease. So you were correct. Any other discussion? No. In that case, uh, I'll put, uh, recommendation five, fifteen point two forward. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Unanimous in carried. We're now moving to item fifteen point three, which is the, um, Community Culture Arts Sports Committee. And I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how we'd like that dealt with.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. I'm just going to move that council adopt the recommendations of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, um, from the eleventh of August.
Thank you very much. Uh, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any discussion?
Um, just, um, briefly, we decided on the date for next year's show holiday, which is shaping up to be a big one. Um, and the other, um, item on the agenda was, um, the continued efforts, um, to implement the customer experience strategy. Um, and the organisation's kicking some goals there. So, um, really happy to report back to the full council.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Unanimous in carried. We now move on to item fifteen point four, which is the Economic and Industry Development Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how she'd like that dealt with.
Thank you, mayor. I just, um, would like to, uh, move and adopt the recommendations of the Economic and Industry Development Committee on the eleventh of August.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekna. Any discussion? I'll move to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Ireland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item fifteen point five. I'll hand over to the chair, councillor Ligon, for how we'd like that, uh.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I'd like to move that, uh, council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee Report number seven, twenty twenty two of eleventh of August, twenty twenty two, with the exception of item two.
Yes.
Uh, item two's, uh, this is an. Uh item two's uh, this is an attached uh uh update uh that's been circulated to Mayor and all councillors um with a version showing changes uh as well as the original version.
So you're moving items one, three.
Yes.
Four and five, is that correct?
One, three, four and five, that is correct.
Okay. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. Any discussion on matters item one, three, four and five of the committee? Yes, Council Tully?
Just briefly, Mayor, in relation to item three about the uh platypus monitoring program. I see this as uh um another significant environmental issue in our city. And I became aware of the high presence of uh uh platypus in in our area some years ago when uh they were discovered uh about a kilometre up up Woogaroo Creek at Goodnae, but about less than a kilometre from the Ipswich motorway. That would surprise a lot of residents. Uh they are in a lot of areas where you would at least expect them. And uh with the floods, um that they're they're very adept at uh burrowing in and avoiding any floodwaters coming down our creek systems. But it is really good. You know, we talk about kangaroos and wallabies and koalas in our area. Uh the hidden animal is the platypus, uh which is frequented uh across the city. Um and anything we can do to monitor their existence and to encourage and assist that um is is appreciated. The community often wouldn't often wouldn't realise how prevalent they are. But they certainly in in our area, I believe along Six Mile Creek as well, uh but certainly along Woogaroo Creek um at Goodnae and at uh Bellbird Park. So it's pleasing to see that this uh uh program uh is identifying issues um which would affect their habitat and environment.
Thank you, Council Tully. If you'd like to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I concur with Council Tully in that uh with the um monitoring of the platypus program. Uh knowing how one that one particular species within the ecosystem uh is behaving and and reacting uh to impacts on the environment is a good uh clear indicator as to the overall health of our waterways. So um yes, it is about the platypus, but it's all also about the uh the greater environment um impact. So it's a it's a very good in indicator and and I believe it should continue.
Thank you, Council Mulligan. I'll note that when we did hit the meeting two weeks ago, that we had a a big discussion with Mr Smith on the impacts of the flood on the breeding grounds, as well as developments and so on. But yeah, very important that we maintain this program so we can continue to monitor and and adjust programs. Thank you, Council Mulligan. Any other discussion? I'll move that recommendation. Those in favour, so not move, so I've moved that we go to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Um Council Mulligan, you wish to move item two?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'd like to uh move that uh item two, that the urban greening plan as presented in attachment one be adopted as a key deliverable for I future.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six, under the theme natural and sustainable.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Fekner. Would I like to speak to this? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, happily uh speak to this this morning. Um came across as a bit of a of a class worry the other week, which I unashamedly am. Uh the affordability of housing is something that's important to me. Um I didn't agree with it being a council objective um to increase house prices. Um certainly, we're waiting on state and federal policy to come through and have a housing market that's a bit better for young people and young families. Um so happy to see these changes made. Um there is a causality with um more trees in a suburban leaf coverage and house price. So that's invariably something that will occur. Um that being said, though, I still actually am a big supporter and proponent of this plan because um it's about livability and um having those trees and the impact that they have on a variety of measures, including mental health, is um really important to me. And um I'm looking forward to seeing um some trees put in an area of race view that's quite scarce and doesn't need to be. And we'll pursue opportunities into the future as a council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion on item two? Thank you, Council Mulligan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'd like to uh through through the Chair, uh thank Council Madsen as a very engaged member of uh the Environment Sustainability Committee and and picking up on on those uh that that item of discussion at the time. Uh it was uh clearly um very quickly uh uh assisted and um um moved on by the organisation. So I also thank the organisation for for taking the feedback uh from committee um to basically get it right. Uh so I thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Council Mulligan. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item sixteen, which is the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. Sorry, fifteen point six, my apologies. Um Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'll hand over to yourself uh as the Chair, but I think items four to six were resolved, I think, at the special ma- meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's my understanding. So um the remaining matters, um I've proposed that we we move in batch.
At one through to three?
One through to three. Um yes, adopting the recommendations from the cent- Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee um on the eleventh of August.
Thank you. Uh do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Kunselman. Any discussion?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um I just briefly um want to acknowledge um the um appointment of our cinema operator Hoyts and I guess the the um the bigger um message that that brings um for our residents in Ipswich. And, you know, it's a show of faith, a return of of a large brand to our our CBD. Um is a huge show of um commitment. Um and, you know, we we're opening a number of um opportunities within the Nicholas Street precinct. We've seen Gelatissimo and and Zembrero. Um and there's a lot more to come. I'm really pleased with the way uh the leasing um is progressing. But I just want to note that it is a lot more than just the success of the Nicholas Street precinct, which is, you know, important, given the investment by council, but it means so much more. And we are seeing, um I guess, um amongst our residents, uh an increased sense of pride um amongst our property owners within the CBD, long term. Um Ipswich families that have held property here for for a long time, just, you know, refurbishing their buildings, giving them a lick of paint. Um the the pride that it's um, a sense of pride that um it's um instilling in our city is just lovely to see. And we've we've had lots of reports on the economic benefits citywide from our investment here in the CBD. Um but, you know, what is difficult to put a price on, and I, you know, of the view that's the most important, that's the social aspects of this, and a good example is the Ipswich Central Partnership Group. Look what they are doing around the CBD. It's not costing any money at all. It's a group of committed, passionate locals that are activating spaces. And um, you know, we recently saw the the Talent um Fest at at Darcy Doyle um Place. And it was lovely to see the families out enjoying that free entertainment. So uh there's a lot to celebrate at the moment and a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. Any other discussion?
Um Mayor, can I speak against it at the moment, please?
You're speaking against the minutes? I don't think you, and it I think you can speak against the minutes. You can speak if there's an error in the minutes.
About some motions?
No, that.
Okay.
It's we're we're um looking at the the minutes that went through?
Okay, I'll wait till you get to the next part.
Mr Me- oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just looking. So you're looking at items one through to three, Councilor Island? So we're looking at item one, which is the minutes. Item two was the Nicholas Street Precinct Retail Subproject and the Nicholas Street Precinct Communications Engagement Events Report. Do you have a question about one of those three reports?
Uh sorry, just answer it again for me.
Yes, so item, yep, so this motion is for items one through to three. Item one is the the minutes of the meeting on the eleventh of August. Item two is the officer's report on the Retail Subproject Steering Committee. And item three is the Communications Engagement and Events Report for July twenty twenty-two. Do you have questions in particular, any of those three?
Was that the one that um uh says about the borrowing?
Council, that's already been done at the special council meeting. That's not up, that's not in discussion at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussions on items one through to three? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room. Council Island, how do you vote?
Okay, affirmative.
Affirmative. Passed, carried, thank you. We now move on to item sixteen point one, which is the CEO Organisation Performance Report for July twenty twenty-two. And I'll just wait for Council Fekner and the Deputy Mayor. Welcome back, Deputy Mayor and Council Fekner. We're now on item sixteen point one, which is the CEO Organisation Performance Report for July twenty twenty-two. Um just note there that um there's a note that that in relation to page two, which is page one hundred and four, that I think when it originally went up, the the link was incorrect. It's now been corrected. Has it been corrected online for the public as well? It will be after the meeting. Thank you very much. Uh so I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Fekner. So did you wish to say something? I saw you reaching for your microphone.
I have to apologise for the incorrect link, Mayor, but I'm I'm happy to um speak to the reporter, answer any questions, whatever is um your and the councillors' wish.
Any questions of the CEO?
Um yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh so it is in relation to finance, but I guess it's in relation to um your job as well, Miss Cooper. So just about the the risk aspect of the current economic climate and inflation. And um I've spoke to um the finance branch about this also. But we'd just kind of um like to know your opinion on how we're manage managing that across our materials and expenses and contracts um and keeping a close eye on it for the rest of the year.
Yep, certainly. Um as has been discussed in previous meetings and um and sessions that we've we've had and will contin- continue to be discussed, we are keeping a very close eye on this. Uh as you're aware, there is a monthly uh financial performance report that is prepared by our CFO and the team in consultation with the general managers across the organisation. And that comes forward to ELT every month. The CFO comes and presents that report and we discuss that in detail. Uh given the uh the challenging budget that we face every single financial year, and this year is certainly no different. Uh we will be having quarterly uh reviews in detail against our financial performance with a particular focus on the efficiency dividend that is built into the budget, as you're aware. So three point four million dollars in efficiencies that we need to find operationally across our supplies and services and uh and uh labour uh employee expenses. So um with that, the monthly reporting, of course, to council that you receive. Uh and also uh this financial year, we're going to be commencing the the budget development uh earlier than uh in previous financial years. So traditionally, we start that process in November uh based on feedback uh from uh yourselves as a council. And in light of the challenges that we face, we will be uh kicking that off early September in a in a session with you in the upcoming briefings and workshops session. Um as has been noted, we closely monitor the impact of inflation on uh our operations and particularly in relation to our capital works program. So our our general manager, Infrastructure and Environment Department, has reported on that uh that we we are seeing mixed results. Uh some uh responses to tenders are coming in uh under. In fact, our estimated budget, others are coming over. Um more often than not, they're actually coming either within budget expectations or or under. That obviously is a constantly evolving situation, so we're not going to be resting on our laurels in that regard uh and doing all that we can to um ensure that we continue to go to open tenders. Uh you know, get the best uh offers that we can, best value for money for council going forward. So a very strong area of focus for us, councillor. That's where you chair.
Thank you, um, Mrs Cooper. I I guess I'm just uh ultra cautious um given the uh um in the impacts that it could place on us. Um and looking back at um Wharton Bay's mayor's message back in June. Um they're um estimating impacts of fourteen percent across the council's um rising fuel power and um expenses for works and community services. So I guess I know that isn't built into our budget um at that percentage. So um I just want to, I guess, watch this space pretty closely, that's all. But thank you. I know that you're doing a great job from um this angle and finances as well, and it's an unpredictable storm. Um but just wanted to manage it and do everything that we can.
Thank you, Council Johnic. That's consistent, well, that's in the report. I think on page hundred and five, it talks about the department's closely monitoring costs, inflation for the program, but at this stage, it's not seeing consistent escalations across all projects. Uh that would have concerned us, been the current program. Uh but we'll continue to mon- monitor the the department, I think. But we did see just, I think, last month, the Red Bank Plains, work stage three, there was a, you know, a big increase in inflation on that one.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So you've got your costs coming to account, but then you've got forecast costs moving forward. And we've got the ability to do that.
Yeah.
And um I guess um pre-plan, so that's that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions of the CEO? No, I guess just in in commentary and discussion, just um uh really impressed, again, the Spark Festival, our second year, the how um fantastic it was. I saw that the Wyoming World Music Festival at Springfield Central had uh twenty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-three attendees, which is just just huge. Um their little little day out, again, was sold out with three thousand attendees. And it's just great. Way Gone to West had sixty-five artists and agents. Um and and all over overall, Spark After Dark attracted um over fifty-two thousand attendees. So it's great to see that our community and those from outside of town embrace Spark as well. Any other discussion?
Just on Wyoming. So that was like a new event, I guess, through the Spark um festivals. And it was in Springfield Central at Orion, and it was absolutely fantastic um from um from a community perspective. It hadn't been done before, but it went really well. Um and it was a really great cultural, educational piece for our community and our children. So I just wanted to highlight that um as yeah, as being an outstanding event. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Johnic. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. I'm now going to call for a a an adjournment um till ten thirty. Um do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Tully. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council Island, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Affirmative. Thank you. See you back at ten thirty. Thank you.
the twenty fifth of August. Just call attendance. I think councillor Ireland is not back. Is that correct?
No, I can't raise her.
Right, okay. Please let me know if she does come on. And so we have all else in attendance. Thank you very much. We're up to item sixteen point two, which is the Brighton Homes Arena, Springfield Central Stadium project funding. And there are three recommendations here. Recommendation is that council commit to funding a total of four hundred and thirty seven thousand eight hundred forty five dollars as its fifty percent contribution to the signals required to be constructed on Eden Station Drive in line with the deed of variation dated the twenty second of January twenty twenty one. B, that council consider the requests received from the Brisbane Lions Football Club to pay their fifty percent contribution to the signals and then allow the Brisbane Lions Football Club to repay this amount to council over a ten year period. And C, that council consider the additional funding request for the three million dollars to the Brisbane Lions Football Club to meet additional costs necessary to implement and operationalise the Brighton Homes Arena within the Springfield Central Stadium. Do you know, naturally each one of them is different, so I remember that we would deal with each one differently. Does anyone have any questions for relevant council officers? I have some questions, but on recommendation B. There's a former finance question on the SBFA.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor of Council. This is Paul Mullenhauer, Council's Treasury Accounting Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhauer. Item B is looking at if council was to proceed that we would, there's a second request that Brisbane Lions repay their amount over a ten year period. And there's this paragraph in here talking about the approval we'd need from the Queensland Treasurer and setting up an SBFA, a statutory body's financial arrangement. Do you mind giving a bit of information about that and what that means?
Yep. So, under the guiding legislation, council operates under the Statutory Bodies Financial Arrangements Act, the SBFA requires certain transactions to have Queensland Treasury approval before we enter into those transactions. With that particular item, the fact that it's over that ten year period would most likely, and I'll canvass it in the sense that until you've actually got a proper agreement in place, it is somewhat or potentially difficult to determine exactly what type of arrangement that would be. But on principle, I would look at that and say it would fall into a type one arrangement that would then needs Treasury approval before entering into the agreement.
So what are the risks around this?
If we were to adopt the recommendation as it stands now and agree to let the Brisbane Lions repay that amount over the ten year period, potentially you might prejudice an approval from the state in terms of allowing that transaction to simply occur because you passed that resolution in the first instance. It's generally accepted that an SBFA approval needs to be in place beforehand and Treasury won't provide retrospective approvals. So with that in mind, the idea would be to, you know, if the desire was to pass the resolution as it stands, my guidance would be to add just a subject to clause, which would give us that ability to go, yes, if we're happy to do that, subject to the approval and then we can proceed.
So that's why the recommendation says that council consider the request.
Yes.
So, okay. How much would be the cost of it over ten years?
So, subject to the agreement, whether or not we would allow the agreement to actually include any level of interest clawback for it, you're looking at half the cost, so four hundred and thirty four thousand interest on that at the moment. If you're using, you know, it's a council rates would be relatively low. So it's not a huge impostor on council to do that, but it's a clearly a decision. Then council's got a funding issue in terms of where does it find its effectively, where does it provide its cash flow from to actually fund those projects within the current period.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Melina. Any other questions of Miss Melina? Yes, councillor Quinselman?
Thank you. I wondered if we were considering less than ten years?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to the nature of the negotiations between council and the Brisbane Lions. I'd have to refer that to the GM.
Any other questions on Mr. Melina? Thank you. Councillor Quinselman, would we like to ask the general manager up to answer the question? Thank you.
Well, we're just for that question.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sean Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr. Madigan. Councillor Quinselman?
That question is in relation to item B, that whether we're looking at less than ten years for repayment.
I discussed that with the lines. I explained to them the approvals that are required for it to, for the repayment period to extend beyond the three years and the Treasury will approve. The indication from them is that effectively their preference is definitely for the ten years and that as an organisation, they would be challenged to repay that amount within the three year period.
Mr. Madigan, I ask, is council legally obligated to do this? Sorry, to recommendation A. Is it legally obligated to do that?
I did seek advice from council's legal area and effectively you would argue that we are not contractually bound to do that. However, the fact that the CEO executed, a former, sorry, CEO executed that agreement, I think there's probably a legal argument on both sides of the equation. Strictly speaking, our lawyers advised we could potentially get out of the agreement and not fund it, but I think it would open us up to potential legal challenge if the lines were to take down that path. And then you never know which way it's going to go.
So if the, let's just say no party can fund this and the traffic light doesn't go up, what's the impact?
The signalisation of Eden Station Drive occurs predominantly from a planning approval perspective. So the planning process has been conducted and effectively with the occupation and operation of the Lions facility at that location, my traffic engineers consider that My traffic engineers consider that the signalisation of it is absolutely necessary. Otherwise, the Eden Station Drive and the intersection with the SGA would reach potential failure very quickly. So, the, if they don't proceed, it's my understanding that they won't receive their actual approvals for occupation and operate at that facility by council.
So when does it have to be done by?
The planning approval and the transport engineers practically as soon as possible. However, given the fact that the Lions are staging their occupation of the facility, so whilst the Lions are hoping to occupy it from their sporting and club facility, you still have the childcare centre, which is staged down the track as well. So the planning team have advised predominantly that they just want a concrete commitment, that the signals are going to be conducted and a specified timeframe for which that will occur.
So, yes, councillor Johnny?
Just have they, or do you know if they've sought for funding or this loan from other levels of government, Mr. Madigan?
Yes, they've been in constant discussions, as you'd expect, with all levels of government. They also have a submission in with the AFL in the amount of three million dollars for additional funding. They're waiting on confirmation from the AFL for that additional funding. And it's my understanding from conversations is that that funding is somewhat connected to the current commercial negotiations with broadcasters that are underway. And they expect that, they're hoping certainly that when that commitment is made between the AFL and whichever channel executes the agreement, which is expected to be fairly soon, that there would be a potential for the three million dollars to be provided by the AFL. And we're talking weeks, not months, in terms of that process. I do know also they have approached the state and federal for additional funding.
Thank you. Councillor Quinzelman?
So is there any point in us voting on C?
That's probably not the question for...
I would argue that that's the discretion of council.
Ma'am?
Yes, Deputy Mayor?
In your professional opinion, Sean, what would you do? If it were your decision?
Certainly. My view on the project is council has, you know, committed significant funds towards the project. You know, in the amount of, in excess of twenty million dollars. Yes, it is a council owned facility, but it is leased for a period of a hundred years. So we've committed to that and that's a very large commitment for a council. We are the largest contributor of funding to it. I agree with the funding of the fifty percent of the signals from the contractual allowance. But I do consider that the funding is likely to become available from either another level of government or the AFL in the very near future.
Thank you. Any other questions on Mr. Madigan?
Just one more.
Yes, this is councillor Johnny?
So I guess if other levels of government matched our contributions, then they would be right to go.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Madigan? Thank you. I guess to get the voting started, I'll go to just recommendation A and I'll move that so we can have a discussion. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Quinzelman. I guess my views on this, I guess for the entire thing, but also A is that, as councillor John pointed out, council has contributed over twenty million dollars to this project. The federal government, state governments have done fifteen million dollars each. We've been, council's only received three percent of the taxes that are paid and the state and the federal governments collect ninety seven percent. So it's a fair whack to our bottom line, but I also note that it was a commitment from our former CEO. So I can understand why the Lions would expect that commitment to be honoured. So I just mentioned that as a discussion point, but open up for other discussion. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. Always a very difficult situation when requests for additional funding on major projects arise. I am supportive of this. The construction of those signals on Eden Station Drive as an entry and exit point into the stadium, very close to the Springfield Green Mac arterial, is important. I know it's always money, everything we do in any level of government, but particularly local government is always money or money related. Councillor Johnic and I were there at the stadium yesterday afternoon. It's taking place very rapidly at the moment. They advise that the grass will be going down in about a week to ten days. It is very significant. It could even be more significant in the future. We know the women will be playing there, training there, and the men will be training there. And possibly and hopefully, they'll be playing there between after two thousand and twenty five, when the reconstruction and redevelopment of the Gabba commences. This is, I've called it previously, the jewel in the crown of Ipswich at this level of football, the national football, with the opportunity of men's games being played there for perhaps up to seven years, up till the two thousand and thirty two Olympics. That is a very important thing that influences me about making sure this Eden Station Drive is properly completed and any other ancillary funding. But it's a massive development. Even the lights that go there give a sense of presence as people arrive on the Centenary Motorway coming towards Springfield to see a very, very rare in a lot of cases. You see it down near the Gold Coast and the Gabba. You know, the lights that will be there for the public and the players, but also the TV networks that are covering the game. So I think this is just part of a progression. It doesn't surprise me, but I just think from Ipswich's point of view, not just Springfield Central, not just the eastern suburbs, but from the, this is really the jewel in the crown. I'm supportive of proceeding with this proposal.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? Another discussion? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to recommendation B, that council consider the requests received from Brisbane Lions Football Club to pay their fifty percent contribution to the signals and allow Brisbane Lions Football Club to repay the amount to council over a ten year period. Is there anyone who would like to move that? Thank you, councillor Johnic. Thank you. A seconder? Thank you, councillor Tully. Thank you. Anyone would like to speak to it?
Thank you, ma'am. So, understanding that recommendation B is for a loan and not for the funding to be given outright, I feel that we have a responsibility to our, our community and our residents to make sure that these lights are placed and are in action so that we don't impact on, on the road network and potentially have any adverse impacts from their, their launch when they do open and further games to the future. So noting that it, there is a ten year loan term, but the Brisbane Lions are also seeking funding from other levels of government. And I'm just wondering if there could be a mechanism in that term to make sure that if funding was received from other levels that we would be first cab off the rank, like a preference of repayment. But I'm supportive of the lights actually in the, in allowing them to go through and for them to be alone, subject to conditions, I guess.
Do you have, I'm just tapping into your professional expertise as well. Do you have any issues with the SBF A of us as a council having to put that in place?
Issues? What type of issues? Sorry?
Oh, just the fact that we're going to have to set one up. To have the ten year loan, we'll have to set up a special, an SBF A.
Yeah, it's a statutory bodies financial arrangements act, just a requirement to obtain their approval.
Yep. So we've done it in the past on several different projects and I guess the weight of the community and the need and the economic opportunities that will arise from this stadium and then the, I guess, perception of Ipswich based on these games, like I think that all plays into it and we we go into these mechanisms for, for other projects and have done so. So, no, I don't have any issue. That's just normal practice for us, I guess, in this instance.
Thank you. I'm speaking against this recommendation. There has been no other stronger financial supporter of this great project than council. We have put over twenty million dollars towards it. I think there are other trees for Brisbane Lions to shake. So like I said, fully supportive of the project. It is a great arena and sporting field, but I won't be supporting that we give a ten year loan for this. Any other speakers? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yes, ma'am. I am supportive of it. It's the twin recommendation with paragraph A. And if the discussions and negotiations correctly identify the financial situation with the AFL or with Brisbane Lions, I think it's something that we need to recognise. Even at this stage, because we're only considering it pending any government approval, we're still not committed to it. And it might shake out between now and the government approval, if it's granted, exactly whether or not it's required. I wouldn't want to cut it off. It doesn't one hundred percent commit us to it. But again, A and B, to a large extent, based on the information that we know at the moment, are twin recommendations. And I'm supportive of this too. Bring it forward. I would hate to see the installation of the lights fail because it is a safety issue, simply because we can't reach an agreement, which I think at certainly an officer level, it mightn't be characterised as an agreement, but certainly a way forward at officer level to ensure that the lights become a reality before the stadium is opened.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Quinzelman?
I'm still trying to understand this completely, but I understand if we're committed to A, B then becomes a question only of whether we agree that it be over ten years. Am I wrong?
They're just, what we're being asked for is to provide a loan for their half, for Brisbane Lions' half, a loan over ten years.
But we agreed on A, didn't we?
Yep, yeah, and I...
So it strikes me that B is only about whether we allow them to repay over ten years. Am I, tell me if I'm wrong, please?
Yeah, so we're contributing half, and we've locked that in with A. And then they're, they've got their other half. But obviously their cash flow is not supportive of that. So then the loan, we're going to loan that to them. That's what the recommendation suggests and that they want a ten year period to repay that. So I guess...
I mustn't be making myself clear. If we, I'll say again, if we've supported A, we've said we will lend them that money.
No, no. A is just for our first fifty percent.
Through you, Chair. Vicky, are you able to scroll up to the first motion there that we agreed on? So there's four hundred and thirty seven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars that we've agreed as a council that would contribute to that. So there's actually another portion, which is exactly that amount again, fifty percent, three hundred and forty seven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars that needs to go towards that project that the Lions need to stump up. The recommendation B is that they want us to front that cost, so the entire signalisation, but they'll pay us fifty percent back.
Over ten years?
Over ten years, is what we're saying.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Yep.
Sorry, sorry. Let me clarify. We're paying the lot and they're going to pass back half.
Correct, over ten years.
Over ten years.
And B is that we consider it, not that we commit to it.
That's correct, yeah.
Sorry, through you, Chair. Yes, because that is, is subject to the approvals via the statutory bodies financial arrangements act. So at this point, it's just, yes, considering. Because we don't know what the terms of that approval even look like.
Yep. If I may, through you, ma'am is the chair, so taking the Treasury Accounting Manager's advice. If council was minded to consider in making your vote, there could be a variation to that recommendation to include appropriately, subject to appropriate approval from the Queensland Treasurer. Just to make that clearer.
I think that was sort of clear on page one fifty five.
It's in the body of the report. Yeah, it is.
Ma'am, I'll move that the motion is amended to include that, that text.
Would you like to repeat that, CEO?
Certainly. So immediately after the words, contribution to the signals and, if we were to insert a comma and write subject...
Could I suggest that those words be right at the start of paragraph B to show that it encompasses everything else, that it's all subject to?
Of course.
I'll just check with the person who's moving it originally. Is that okay, Deputy?
Thank you.
Okay. Just give Vicky time to... Noting that it doesn't proceed unless it has approval from the Queensland Treasurer anyway?
Correct, yeah.
So it's... Okay, so that was the, councillor Johnic, you were the mover and councillor Tully, you were the seconder. Are you both in agreeance with that amendment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that is the live amendment before us, the live motion for B?
I have a question, ma'am. Just to clarify to you or the CEO or to another officer. Would that approval or require that be repaid over a specified period of time with interest or with the appropriate rate of interest as well?
That's what we discussed with Mr. Mullenhauer. I mean, it's up to us and we would negotiate, is my understanding, is what Mr. Mullenhauer was saying, that that would be part of the negotiation.
Thank you. I think that's important because it's not just a, you know, an interest free loan over ten years. It would be repaid at the appropriate rate.
Yeah. How would the mover and second this motion be if we, I'll move another amendment to motion B, that the agreement come back to council for a decision? I'd be amenable to that, to say that, so I know it's considered a request, but whatever is negotiated that comes back to council? I'd be very amenable to that.
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay? So I'll put, okay. To, an alteration to recommendation B? Just think where we'd go in, council?
I think it could be another, another sentence at the end of the existing paragraph.
At the end, over a ten year period, subject to council approval or something like that at the end?
Subject to council approval, yes.
Let's do a capital C for council. I put that to the mover and the seconder?
Agreed.
Agree.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour for recommendation B, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We then go to item C, is that council, so recommendation C, that council consider the additional funding request for three million dollars to the Brisbane Lions Football Club to meet additional costs necessary to implement and operationalise the Brisbane Homes Arena within the Springfield Central Stadium. Do I have a mover for that?
I'll formally move that.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Johnic. I'll hand over to the mover if he wishes to speak.
Yeah, I just need to clarify, is this, again, we've used the word considering there and I note the, you know, the comments by the officer, that it's a matter for us to consider. Can I just clarify, and perhaps I should have raised it earlier when Mr. Madigan was there, is this a matter to be considered immediately or down the track or after any other funding from other levels of government? Have been, I know that was mentioned, but is that the intent? I think the word consider sort of embraces that, that sort of scenario evolving over, you know, the next couple of months.
May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? Unless the CEO can...
Well, from my own, I'll have a crack, if I may. Ma'am, through you as chair, and I'm sure Mr. Madigan will be happy to assist if I'm incorrect. But from my own discussions with the Brisbane Lions, certainly, I mean, you're correct, councillor Tully, it could mean now or into the future and both would be appropriate. They're urgently seeking the funding for the reasons... They're, they're urgently seeking the funding uh for the, the reasons that they've outlined in, in the letter. Uh, they are very eager to progress with all of the items that they mention. Um, of course, with the lighting, the broadcast lighting, the scoreboard, um but they, they are disappointed. Uh, and, you know, very eager to progress with the community childcare centre as well as the other items noted. So they're, they're eagerly awaiting uh your consideration um as a matter of urgency. Uh, of course, a future consideration would be welcome as well.
Thank you. I think councillor Doyle.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, if I may, just clarify with the CEO that um we've had some discussion around I think councillor Johnny questioned whether or not funding requests had gone into other levels of government. So we do know that that's occurred in relation to C, the three million dollars.
Yeah, I can certainly attest to that as well from my own discussions with the, the CEO, uh the Brisbane Lions and uh, uh the uh project manager, Jake Hansen, for the, for the development of the stadium. But they, they certainly have approached other levels of government, uh and the AFL. Um, they're certainly knocking on all doors and pursuing all avenues for this fu- funding.
Okay, and is there a sense of timing when they may receive a response from, from the other levels of government and the AFL?
Uh, I couldn't comment uh in relation to other levels of government, but uh Mr Madigan uh re- reported on his uh understanding that um and I can confirm, I've seen email correspondence that the advice from the, the AFL is, is pending in the very near future as to whether they will say yay or nay.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
Just speaking in support of this, the key word is consider. They've asked us to consider it. So without engaging in semantics, we're deciding to consider it. Um, truly, um, at some stage, and I, I think that's appropriate to keep it alive without making a final decision today pending the, the advice from the AFL or on other levels of government. So I'm, I'm comfortable with having that. And I'd also become, well, I might propose an amendment, the um, um do we need the words su- subject to any final decision by council? I think that's similar to the other, the other motion.
So now that councillor Tully's raised it as a motion, um, as an amendment, sorry.
Is it necessary?
So I have to ask you if we're having a discussion.
Sorry, Mayor, I just, I, I, I didn't raise it before. Um, but, but given we are only considering, uh you know, I, I don't think we need to include subject to council's approval. Considering to my mind is so general and, and I would expect as part of the consideration, we'll have a further briefing. There's, yeah, but.
Sorry, I do acknowledge what, what you say is probably correct, but just for that consistency between B and C.
Okay, so you're putting forward that at the end of um recommendation C, subject to council approval.
Yeah, I'll, I'll propose that as an amendment.
Councillor Johnny, you were the seconder, you comfortable with that? Thank you. Uh, so that's the live motion, recommendation that's before us. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Um, I'd just like to add my thoughts on it and refrain from um slandering the Gold Coast much on this at all, but um.
Don't hold it.
I'm somebody who's purchased more than my weight in um Australian Football League paraphernalia over the course of my life. Um, so I do consider it a bit frustrating that the AFL is still on the hook pretty heavily for the Gold Coast and Greater Western Sydney franchises. Um, they, they do have the capacity to, to fund this extra three million dollars. And um I think we've supported them as much as we can as a council. I don't want to see us defer community projects to, to find three mil. Um, it's not a small sum of money. Um, there's a lot that the AFL have wasted money on in the last ten years. AFLX is one of them. Um, so they can find the money, they have it in their capacity. Um, I'm sure they'll sell some more advertising to betting companies. Um, that seems to be a good revenue stream for them. Um, there's, there's other, there's other places for this money to come from. And um I think we should cool our jets until all other options have been explored.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Doyle?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, given that at this stage, um, the recommendation is just to consider, I'll, I'll be happy to keep an open mind and explore further, but I just want to go on the record. Um, you know, councillor Madison has, has mentioned that an additional three million dollars funding for, for us to find will be difficult and will come at the cost of projects on our capital programme. And, you know, we have so many sporting and community groups that are coming to us looking for their clubhouses, their, their fields, and we have that enormous pressure at the moment. Um, so to, to support something like this at the expense of our grassroots clubs um is a little bit challenging for me, but happy to keep um an open mind, knowing the, the economic um benefits for the entire city for this piece of infrastructure, particularly leading into the games.
Yes, councillor, thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor Kunsman?
Um, I'll vote for this on the basis that it's a consideration, but I do urge my colleagues when this comes up for consideration that you come to me and give me some damn good reasons why we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kunsman. I guess for my, my perspective, um noting the, the time imperative, I'd rather give a very clear signal to the Brisbane Lions, which like I said, I'm so looking forward to it. It's, it's a tremendous facility. Uh, I've been to, uh, met with the teams there quite a few times. Really looking forward to having this elite level uh club coming to our, our beautiful city. Uh, so fully support it, but I guess I just look at the fact that, that, that council has been the number one financial contributor, over twenty million dollars to this particular thing. So I think um I would rather see the money spent on our grassroots support. And I do note in our attachment three, there is a uh funding um request that, that the Brisbane Lions have sent to the Australian Government uh with the full support of the local member for, for Oxtley there as well. So they are obviously um trying, I'd rather give them that. So I, I won't be supporting this, but I, I, I do understand the, the wording of this um and why other people may be voting differently. Yes, councillor Fekner?
Equally, Mayor, I speak um against this motion. Um, I'm a huge supporter of this project as a whole.
Yeah.
Council um has given a phenomenal amount um to get this off the ground. And I just want to send a clear signal, um because if council says today that it's going to consider, um are we going to hamper the advocacy efforts and that final push potentially from the Brisbane Lions to find the funds elsewhere? Um, I question that, so I speak against this this morning.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Councillor Johnny?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Fekner. So that's kind of what I was a little bit worried about as well. Um, that we don't um send any wrong signals out, uh and we don't uh in, by saying consider, that isn't read in six or twelve months' time as we were going to commit. So we will always consider, but this is not, this is not considered a commitment. Um, and I don't know if we can change the wording of that to reflect that council consider, but not commit.
I think, councillor, that's probably in there because it says subject to council approval, so I think that's, it's clear that it's not a commitment.
Yeah, it's just things get implied in future that we don't always necessarily think, um think of at the time, that's all. But thank you.
Uh, thank you, councillor Johnny. Yes, councillor Kunsman?
The fact that it's a consideration is the only reason I'd vote for it. If, if I thought for one moment that it was a commitment, I would vote against it. And I think we've got to reach a point where we say enough is enough. And that, that our, our means are not unlimited and that we cannot continue to meet infinite demands.
Thank you. Any other points? I'll go to the mover for a right of reply before we vote. Councillor?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I think uh most of the speakers have identified the key word, key words in there about um consider the matter and subject to council approval. I would say that that doesn't um stretch the imagination too much. If the Brisbane Lions are watching today's meeting, they might be able to count the numbers. Um, if we really do have to consider it based on uh decisions of other levels of government. But I, I'm, I'm in favour of, um obviously of keeping this matter open. The other reason is that um the amount of funding uh by the Commonwealth possibly, or the state or the AFL, um, yeah, could be important in any final decision. But at the end of the day, all we're saying is that we would consider it, we're giving no commitment whatsoever. And what I've heard today, it probably makes it fairly clear that in that consideration, if necessary, down the track, um, it may not be a decision that the council is prepared to make at that time.
Thank you. I'll now call on a vote. Those in favour of recommendation C, please raise your hand. In favour? Okay, so councillor Madison, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Milligan and councillor Kunsman. Those against? Myself and councillor Fekner. So the motion is carried. Thank you very much. We move on to.
Sorry, Mayor, is, is, is the, the other councillor on the line still or not?
No, she's not online.
Okay.
Um, so move on to sixteen point three, which is provisional project approval. Now, I'm just gonna, before I, we go to that, I think, because it's just one project, I think there was some discussion about, well, do we actually list what the project is in the recommendation? And I know councillor Tully, you also sent us an email a couple of days ago with some specifics in there as well. Did you wish to amend that motion slightly to?
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, well, there is, we, we can identify the provisional project as the installation of a plaque on Brisbane Terrace at Goodna. But if we could incorporate into, as a, an addendum for tabling, a, a, an image of where it's likely to be located near, in Brisbane Terrace, but near the corner of Layard Street, Goodna.
I'll say on the, on the southwestern side of uh Layard and Brisbane Terrace?
Yes, it, it, that's, it's in Bris- Brisbane Terrace about twenty or thirty metres to the west of um, on the southern side of Brisbane Terrace, about twenty to thirty metres uh to the west of Layard Street.
Yeah. So we're looking at the certain location, or like, I guess we can say that um it would need, the location should be approved by Division Two councillors, as it's your Division Two provisional project. I'm happy with either way.
Yeah, we have had a discussion with the officers, but, but, but if, if that wording goes in, that's probably clearly identified. There, there is a, a bike way which comes up onto the footpath at that location, so we identified it, it being several metres to the east of that uh bike way. If, I think you can, people can see that in the photograph. So if people are stopping to um re- read the plaque, um, there, there'll be a safe distance from the bike way.
So may I suggest then, um, for this before we move, if I may, that council approve the provisional project for the installation of Information Park for Goodness Historic Trees on the corner of Brisbane Terrace and Layard Street? Goodna? Sorry?
Sorry, near the corner of Brisbane Terrace.
Oh, near the corner?
Sorry.
Uh, if I could say, uh, in consultation with Division Two councillors, would that be enough to?
Yeah, and I also just send an image, a map im- image to.
Thank you. In consultation with. So as the chair, I'm, I'm happy to um move that particular recommendation. Um, councillor Tully, are you happy to second that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Um, now, open up for discussion.
Yes.
Yes, councillor?
Mister Mayor, uh again, I'll be brief. I do have a passion for Goodna and I've got a passion for history, particularly in the eastern suburbs, but across the whole city. This plaque will recognise um the original planting of the jacaranda trees in Goodna in nineteen thirty two. They were planted by work gangs during the Great Depression, uh when Brisbane Terrace, um as it's now known, uh was the main road until nineteen fifty five, uh from Brisbane to Ipswich and then on to Toowoomba. Um, there's only about eight of the original trees that have survived the floods of nineteen fifty five, nineteen seventy four and two thousand and eleven. Fortuitously, they missed the floods of two thousand and twenty two by perhaps a vertical depth of less than a metre. Uh, because they are on the southern and northern side of Brisbane Terrace. Some of the, a lot of the trees haven't survived. They've come down in high winds, they've rotted through. The resistor graft tests have shown that some of them, them have to be removed. There are new trees there. We're only one of two couns- uh, two communities in Australia that I'm aware of where we have um jacaranda festivals, uh in Goodna and at Grafton, of course, in Northern New South Wales. Haven't had the festival for two years in Goodna because of Covid and because of the lead times and the uncertainty um, uh which has prevailed, um, uh the, the committee hasn't been able to gear up to have that festival for this year. My proposal is that this be installed and unveiled on the last Saturday in, in October of this year, which is the um um, uh that the, um, when the festival is normally held. It's just an opportunity to recognise ninety years ago when these uh were planted. There are some historic photographs of Brisbane Terrace in the nineteen twenties and thirties, not of the planting, but of the engineers in those days. State engineers who used to wear white coats uh when they inspected uh the roads. Quite, quite, quite interesting and fascinating. And I'd ask councillors to support this as just a, another little thing to, to preserve the um uh for posterity, the history of our local community.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Anyone else, else like to speak to?
Uh, if I could, um, I'd like to get some clarification from councillor Tully. Um, the planting of these trees, was that part of public works to alleviate the Great Depression?
That, that's correct. There were work gangs established, you know, because employment was um very difficult at the times and they were how people and families survived. And those work gangs uh at Goodna were planting jacaranda trees. Um, and yes, yeah, that, that's exactly the situation back ninety years ago.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. With that being the case, I'm happy to support the motion today. Um, I think it's worthy of considering the legacy of public works which occurred during the Great Depression to um alleviate the economy. Um, and it's important to remember that. Um, you've got to look at the approaches to the economy and how Keynesianism works. And um it is a subtle reminder, and maybe this won't make it into the plaque, but um the works of Friedrich Hayek have no place in Ipswich. And um we should remember that.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other discussion? Thank you, councillor Johnny.
Um, yeah, just noting what councillor Tully um and councillor Madison have said um in the history of the jacarandas in Goodna, obviously, and this section of Goodna has those historical trees that have got um a lot of history that have walked under them. So my grandfather, um, two of my grandfathers actually walked under these trees when they um were left the army. Um, and were at the Red Bank um army base or and walked up past my house where I live now, um, on Brisbane Terrace, under these trees. And so I obviously just found this out um in ancestry dot com a little while ago. But, you know, it means a lot to people of Ipswich. There is a lot of history there other than um when they were first planted. So we, we have to celebrate this as much as we can.
I agree, councillor. I think that's culturally quite significant. I'll, I'll be so very supportive of uh this provisional uh project as well. Any other discussion? Do you wish to have a right of reply? Even though, I don't think you might speak against it.
No, but I, I just thank my two colleagues and then just to indicate to councillor Madsen, it's only the local government act in your reference to Keynesian economics that precludes me from calling you a comrade today.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll move on to item sixteen point four, which is the monthly financial performance report. May I have a relevant council officer to speak, to ask a question of things?
Morning again, Mayor and councillors. Paul Mullenhow, Treasury Accounting Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mullenhead. Um, obviously, with what's happening in the, the economy and inflation and so on, what are some of the concerning things and what is the organisation doing to manage risk?
I think the, the most important thing to point out at this juncture in the year is, is the vigilance of the organisation, the processes that were put in place to look at its operations across the year. Um, noting some of the comments and questions from councillor Johnny earlier this morning. Um, that ability to look forward is somewhat difficult. Um, if we looked at um reserve banks around the world and their ability to predict where spikes in, in costs have gone over the course of the last twelve months, there'd be very few of them that would actually sit. spikes in costs have gone over the course of the last 12 months, there'd be very few of them that would actually sit and even fewer economists that would actually put their hand up and say they got it right. That in itself doesn't mean we don't remain vigilant. We continue to monitor what we're doing in terms of our spend. We probably need to think about some strategies around how we actually actively manage that budget across the year. And continuing to exercise a level of good fiscal restraint, given the circumstances, allows us to then make other decisions. If prices start to steady off, rises don't continue to grow. If prices start to come off, we have the ability to go back and deal with and look at those changes in the economy along the way. But continuing to be vigilant, I think, is my best advice at this point in time.
Obviously, our budget, we put aside 30 million for flood recovery. How are things going with the money coming back from QRA, from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority?
Yep. We'll note in the report, there's the observations around where those flood recoveries are sitting from, particularly from that disaster recovery event. There's an initial element of that that we, as a council, will absorb. That's part of any standard disaster event there. We've lodged the application, as I understand it, for approximately 25 mil relating to the CAT C, CAT D works which relate to particularly our parks. We are waiting on approval for that. And I won't profess to speak, I suppose, out of turn in terms of where it sits. But I think it's, we're reasonably optimistic in terms of what that looks like. That then results in us needing to have to think about and possibly increase that level of that $30 million that we've put in our budget. But it gives us also an opportunity to reassess how we were funding that along the way, if the QRA are going to provide that level of funding. We are continuing to look at the assessments of the road assets and the like in terms of where that sit. And that will be the next package that'll come up for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Malinhead. Any other questions from councillor Johnny?
Thank you. I just have a question about the flood recovery spend and noting that we are just considering the contract labour and overtime as the actual costs, additional costs that we would have had to have spent for flood recovery. And noting that any repairs would be just in normal business. Is that right?
The repair costs in terms of, you'll have to forgive me, I will get the terminology wrong here, but our emergency repair works is recoverable. I suppose the point that the report's making there is that when we're using our day label workforce to undertake some of those works, that's the element that's not recoverable from the QRA. We would have, in a general sense, the wording of the agreements from the QRA is such that you would have incurred those costs anyway. You've diverted those resources from other BAU activities to deliver those repairs. And that's the element that we, that's the gap effectively that we end up with.
Yeah, just, I guess, asking that question so that when we reflect on our financials and we look at our costs at the end of financial year, then we can see what has come because of the impact of the disasters and not just, you know, our business as usual.
Part of the consideration when we report on the end of financial year, the June results, June 22 results, is actually taking into account not only where we went to from our BAU activities, but layering across the top of that, the work that's had to been done and been incurred, the costs have been incurred by council as part of that flood recovery work, yes.
Yeah, great. And then, yeah, just speaking about looking at and monitoring like the inflation expenses and what impacts that might have on council. And not that we would ever be able to forecast correctly, but just so that awareness and the strategy that you mentioned, that we could be proactive there to make sure that decisions are made before they come, before we're left a week to make them, if that makes sense. So a little bit more forethought would be great for us as councillors when we're making financial decisions, I guess. So, yeah, when you mentioned strategy, I got excited.
Certainly, I think when the CEO spoke earlier this morning around what the CEO and the ELT group are doing, it'll be the work that flows out of that level of review and analysis will actually be a forward look in terms of what do we do next through the next part of the year? And how do we adjust to conditions as they evolve and change throughout the year?
And a question you might not be able to answer, but the mayor from Moreton Bay and the 14% increase that he's claiming the council will have on their materials and services and fuel and costs. Do you have any insight into that?
I can't speak with any level of expertise around what would drive that level of comment. Certainly, subject to when the comment was actually made, would have been looking at a forward projection of where costs were likely to go. It won't be a.
Exact science.
It won't be an exact, yes, definitely not an exact science. Again, the important part for any local government, and I suspect Moreton Bay's activities would have been, if this is where our costs are going, how do we manage? What services do we continue to provide? What do we lean back on? How do we integrate those extra costs into our business as usual? As I, again, I could be completely wrong here, but I don't think Moreton Bay would have put their rates up by 14% to help cover those extra costs. So it's about managing those issues as they go.
I like that. Any other question, Mr. Malinhead? Thank you, Mr. Malinhead. Appreciate you coming back up. So I'll move 16.4, which is the monthly financial performance report. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any discussion? Now, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to 16.5, which is Nicola Street Precinct, proposed fees and charges for the community and commercial use of Toowoomba Place. So, and the recommendation is that council adopt the proposed charges for community and commercial hire of Toowoomba Place within Nicola Street Precinct as due to attachment one. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this? I think councillor Tully, you do? Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got several questions.
Thank you very much.
Karen Sutton, Communications, Engagements and Events Manager.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Councillor Tully?
I'll start with this. On page two of the report, it said the proposed date of effect of these new fees and booking system is approximately October 2022. But when you go to what's proposed to be adopted over two pages, the attachment A or one, there's no reference into there or in the motion about when this would commence.
So we are at a stage right now that the fees and charges have been here for consultation. We, on the booking side of things and on the operation side, we have started to develop the form, essentially, the way that the customer would book that. We are just finalising that process essentially, and we'll be ready to launch that from mid-October.
Yeah. Now, the point I'm making is that the report indicates that the report, but not the recommendation, doesn't embrace or indicate a commencing date, which I believe, because we're adopting fees and charges, and they're not from the 1st of July, that we need an operative date in the motion. So I'll raise that when it comes up, yeah. The second thing is, sorry, just bear with me.
That's okay. Take your time.
Oh, yes. In attachment one, right at the start, under pedestrian mall activities, it says permits, and I'm just leaving out the other words, but permits to undertake the activities may be issued for up to three months from the date of first commencing use. Is the intention should be that that be three months prior to the date of first commencing use? Rather than from, which is suggesting moving forward and that people might interpret that to say they've got three months to get a permit after they've commenced?
No, I'm happy to relook at that verbiage. Essentially, it means that they can book for that three-month period. And the idea was that they may host a market.
Yeah.
And that market may be monthly. So from that first day.
Yeah, sorry. No, I'm just, you know, when you read these things, you just know that sometimes it's, you'll probably look at it 100 times or 1000 times. Now, finally, oh, I'm just wondering, on page one of the attachment, there's a discounted community use fees are applicable in two instances. One, upon proof of status as a bona fide charitable or community organisation, or acceptance by the relevant general manager that the applicant is a bona fide charitable organisation. I think we should include in that, under that second dot point, that the acceptance by the general manager that the applicant is a bona fide charitable organisation or community organisation. Just to make it clear that the power of the GM in that case includes not only a charitable, but a community organisation.
I'm happy to take that on board.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll have to, we haven't moved in C. Sorry, I'll just double check.
Oh, could I?
We haven't moved a second, so we'll probably discuss this during discussion, if that's okay.
Just got one other question. If we use the 1st of October as the operative date, or the alternative would be to perhaps delegate it to the CEO to determine the operative date? That might be an easier thing based on the.
Yeah, essentially, we will be ready by the 1st of October to do that. So I'm happy to take on board either option.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to come back to that, just to test the officers, Karen's through you, Chair, level of comfort with the 1st of October.
Yes, I am. It's just a testing facility, testing process right now. We have the online form for the community to use. I'm just getting, making sure I've got a few sets of eyes over that and also the process that they will, the follow-on process that we'll be able to engage with those customers that want to use it. So I'm happy with that date.
Mayor, Chief, we love Ms. Sutton or the CEO. If we do include community organisation as well, is there any impact, any concern from the organisation if that's added? Nope? Okay. Thank you. No. Any other questions of Ms. Sutton? No, thank you very much. So I'll move this. Do I have a second for that? Just thinking councillor Doyle? Open up for discussion, councillor Tully.
All right. Could I suggest the following three amendments in the formal recommendation at the end to add the words with effect from 1 October 2022?
Thank you.
And then in the attachment, which is what we're adopting, right at the start, the first operative paragraph on page one, may be issued up to three months prior to the date of first commencing use. I think that was the indication from the.
I'll just repeat that for the minutes, the secretariat. That's okay? Do you mind repeating that, councillor Tully?
Yes, where it says three months from the date, to take out the word from and add the words prior to the date of first commencing use. And?
Just wait till, just wait till.
Have we got that one?
I'm still checking that you're happy with that, what you're seeing on the screen.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And then on page one of the attachment, again, under the sentence or the paragraph commencing discounted community use fees, under the second dot point, to add the words at the end, after charitable organisation, the words or community organisation.
Just so that, do you think it'd be easy to do an A, B, C for recommendations there or just one massive one?
Most, yes. But if there's no disagreement, we perhaps could vote on them all together.
Move them in batch. So you're happy with R, C, how that's worded?
Sorry, I might just explain that under that first dot point, under the two dot points, there's two ways in which it can be done, upon the proof, which might be quite obvious to the relevant officer, that it's charitable or community. But the proposed amendment to the second dot point is to make it clear that the relevant general manager also has the ability to determine a category of a bona fide charitable or community organisation as well. So it could be under either of those two headings.
Thank you, councillor Tully. I'm comfortable with those amendments. I'll just go to the second. Councillor Doyle, are you comfortable with those? Amendments?
Mayor, no, that is fine. I'm happy with that.
Okay, so the move of the second, are you okay with it? So I guess I propose that we move all three together at once, unless there's any dissent. Yes, councillor?
I just want to clarify through discussion, if that's okay. The, and, yep, just please clarify it for me, because I just got a little bit lost with that first paragraph. Because I'm reading it as permits to undertake activities within a pedestrian mall under Local Law 3, Section 6, may be issued for up to three months. So it's more about the, a limit to the timeframe of the permit as opposed to retrospectively applying it from the date of first use. But please explain it to me so I understand.
That's a, that's a good example how that can be interpreted in two separate ways, perhaps. Even with my proposed amendment prior to the date of, yeah, leaving that there, but for, and then adding the words for a period up to three months at the end of that paragraph to make it, to cover both sort of interpretations.
I was going to say, if we include for a period, we'll help clarify.
So just to help the secretary here, do you mind rereading, recommendation B on what you think it should be?
Prior to the date of first commencing use for a period up to three months at the end, to add those words. Yeah, we don't want people.
We've got the word three months written twice. I'll just look at how that's, probably needs to be tidied up.
Three months prior to the date for a period. I think that covers both possible interpretations of that. It's interesting, Mayor, how it can be read. And now I was alluding to that, people can interpret it in two different ways.
I think the CEO was going to say something.
At risk of further complicating the matter, so.
Why not?
I guess the way it was worded made sense, and I agree with councillor Johnic through you, Mayor, as the chair, that it's intended to be a block approval from the date of first commencing use. But councillor Tully, what are you seeking to clarify with your?
It was how long prior to the intended first commencing use that we'd receive an application? Like to limit it to a reasonable operative period?
I'm happy to take advice from an expert, but I don't think we would, we'd want that to remain fairly flexible, councillor Tully, as to how far in advance people apply and receive their approval?
I just can, yeah, it just concerns me. It's like renewal of dog registrations and things like that. There's a short sort of period, you know, involved. Otherwise, someone could apply five years in advance. And I'm not sure, based on fees, you know, changing over time and proper consideration at the time of council policy, whether or not we want to put an operative period prior to that date.
I think that, yeah, like.
So can I ask people, put their microphones, I cannot hear it and I'm.
Sorry, I think that some community events are like planned 12 months in advance. So I think we don't want to limit that. And I think that the confusion with the rewording of it is going to make it seem that you can start using it three months before you ask for a permit. And that's not what we want to do. That's sorry, just to put my.
That's how I read it, the way I currently read before any amendment.
So could I, could I go back to what the original wording of that first paragraph is? Could I, so I'm just checking with, is councillor Doyle?
A very simple solution, Mayor, to offer. Simply remove the words from the date of first commencing use. It will then state that permits may be issued for up to three months, full stop.
So you're proposing is that first sentence is permits to undertake activities with a pedestrian mall under Local Law 3, Section 6, may be issued for up to three months?
That certainly.
I believe that's what you're putting forward? Okay, I'm comfortable. Councillor Doyle, are you comfortable with that amendment?
Yes, for a period of up to three months.
No, can I just say, I don't think we, yeah, issued for up to three months, full stop. Yeah, that doesn't address the issue that I've raised, but that will shake out, you know, as this policy is given effect to, whether or not we need a leading period. But for the sake of simplicity and moving this forward.
Keeping it simple sounds good.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so I think the move, myself and councillor Doyle, okay. I'll just check in with the CEO if that's.
Getting nods from the GMs. I'm just wondering how, you know, other fee arrangements and permits apply across our other functions. But I think that's fine. I do agree with councillor Johnic that the words up for periods up to would be better English, but I think it's. but I think it's fine the way it is, if you want to keep it simple.
Okay. So just, I'll wait till Secretary just, so we can see all three recommendations.
And Mayor, I won't even mention in recommendation A that there should be a comma after October.
You just did. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Liam. So the three recommendations are up there now. Just give people a chance to reread them with fresh eyes. So we've added the date. I don't think you have the, in section for B, it's the, that's, it's the first sentence there. So that's the first sentence of the first paragraph, so under three point, yeah. First sentence.
Yeah, I think on that third one, we need to indicate where we're adding those words.
I think we'll work through that.
That it's
Okay, so it's in the, I think we've got the, under the discounted community use fees, I think that's what is written there? The second dot point to add the words or community organisation. So it'd be
Sorry.
It'd be the acceptance by the relevant general manager that the applicant is a bona fide charitable organisation or community organisation.
Yeah, but it should indicate where it goes in that paragraph.
It does say that. So page one of attachment one, under discounted community use fees, second dot point to add the words or community organisation.
That's right, but it doesn't say where in that paragraph those words would be amended.
At the end, to add the words, at the end of the sentence. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Councillor Doyle, as a secondary, are you comfortable with that? Thank you. So again, I'll just give people the chance, because they've been amended significantly, just to, so A, B and C. Okay, everyone's had a chance to read it. Oh, thank you. So they're the three motions before us. They'll just open to general discussion about the matter. Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd just like to start by saying that for such an ordinarily bland report topic, I was so excited to see this one in our papers, because what it does represent and signal is a time that's, you know, almost upon us, where we will have a lot of activity and activation and a bustling mall once again. So that, that excites me. It did also occur to me upon first read of the policy that it was a little bit light on just thinking ahead and anticipating what we will have to navigate and manage from a governance and a local law perspective, all this activity, positive activity that I look forward to. But, but I don't have any underlying concerns with it. It's a good starting point. But I think as we grow and evolve and introduce new activations and community groups, I can see this policy potentially evolving. But I think that's all for the moment. It's very exciting to anticipate buskers and vehicles moving through the precinct finally, after all this time.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of A, B and C, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We're now jumping because of the change in our order to item eight, which is the presentations. And I think Deputy Mayor, you had a presentation that you were going to provide to council?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make use of this provision within the meeting procedure to just highlight some good, positive stuff that's happened in our city. A couple of weeks ago, we had a wonderful weekend of commemoration for the fiftieth anniversary of the Box Flat mining disaster. Council contributed financially to that, but also our staff contributed in a variety of ways. Our wonderful labour force on the ground prepared the memorial for Sunday and they did a great job. It looked amazing. They even installed a secondary path for access that was good. And I'd also like to highlight the other people who stepped up to provide some funding. We had our four state members, Lance McCallum, Jennifer Howard, Shree Smullen and Jim Madden provided contributions. We had the mighty CFMU Mining Division step in, the Queensland Mines Rescue Service. All great organisations with a great history in Ipswich. The CFMU Mining Division obviously started as the Queensland Colliers Union here in Ipswich. That's part of our legacy. Moving on, the Ipswich Historical Society, it's worth mentioning, they took carriage of the festivities and they did a really good job. A number of us attended all three functions which were put on and they were great. Also would like to highlight the Sfora Brothers in the lunch that they had on the Sunday for family members. And also the, I can't remember their trading name, but the, the racecourses knew. Yeah, the turf club call themselves a convention and exhibition centre or something now. It's a different name and I apologise for not having that prepared. Furthermore, Lawell and Motors were very good with their beautiful modernisation of the former Mines Rescue Station. That was really good to be on a historic site like that. And then the Castle Gate James, the business adjacent to the memorial. It was good to see them step up and make use of their car park. Furthermore, Cleanco, good corporate citizens of Ipswich, who've made a lot of actions in the community already. They took part, which was all good. I think it shows that there's a lot of goodwill out in the community when people want to get together and, you know, commemorate something that deserved to be commemorated. And I'm very proud of the role council played and all of these other wonderful businesses and community groups. I'd reiterate again, the work of Hugh Taylor towards the event's been pretty good. Well, not pretty good, outstanding. Probably sometime last year, councillor Ireland and I discussed it with him and it seemed like a pretty ambitious series of events. I had a chuckle with some of his family members on the weekend who agreed that they too thought it was ambitious. But I thought that it all came together seamlessly and it was great to see. And on that note, thank you for listening. Was passed on a plaque that was presented to the mayor on the night. I'm going to pass that on to the CEO because I'm very appreciative of the work of the council officers in ensuring that that legacy was properly commemorated. We're all workers here in Ipswich and it's good that we've got each other's back in ensuring that the right things happen.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. We move on to item seventeen, which is the notices of motion. None. Number eighteen, questions on notice? None. In that case, I'll move to meeting close. It's eleven forty-six and I close the meeting. Thank you very much.